Okay, welcome everyone. Happy New Year. It's our first meeting in 2019. So we'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the roll call. So Madam Clerk, if you could please do the roll call.
Kelly Morrissey.
Here.
Christopher Pulis. Michael Ricchio.
Here.
Victoria Triano.
Here.
John Berry.
Here.
William Dietzick.
Here.
Tom Lombardi.
Here.
John Maselli.
Present.
Christopher Palmeri.
Here. And if I could, Councilman Pulis asked me to share into the record that he is unable to attend tonight due to a longstanding professional commitment that he has down in Washington, DC. For the last two years, he has served on the Council of Distinguished Educators for the National Commission on Social, Emotional, and Academic Development. And he is attending the release event of the Commissioner's final report tonight down in Washington, DC. So we wish that he could be here with us, but obviously, his profession has taken him away tonight.
So he's in the snow?
He is, yeah. Hopefully, he'll get back in time. So, I don't know who has to prayer this evening? Okay. Attorney Dietzick will lead us in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for direction and guidance. Keep us focused tonight on what is best for Sutherland and her people. Amen.
Amen.
And Councilwoman Morrissey, can you lead us in a flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting of 2018.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to approve. Great, is there a second? We have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Councilman Communications, Mr. Lombardi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a friendly reminder that this Saturday at 1:00 PM at Camp Sloper is the annual Polar Plunge. If you haven't already seen all the fundraising efforts going on, please, please help if you can. If you can't, come down for a great day. It really is a fantastic fundraiser for the community. Secondly, I want to recognize and point out an outstanding member of our community, someone who has spent the last 20-plus years mentoring and guiding our youth in this town through his volunteering through the soccer program. This is someone who I consider a mentor myself and a friend of mine. And recently, I learned that he was awarded the Connecticut Assistant Coach of the Year for high school soccer. So he's also a member of the town staff, and he's with us tonight. So I would just like to congratulate Keith Langston on that very excellent award. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Congratulations. Any other?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder to the community and to us, on Sunday, Dr. Martin Luther King will be honored at First Baptist Church on Merrittan Avenue. It starts at 10:00. And I know it's a little difficult because it's a Sunday morning if our service times or mass times conflict, but it's an open invitation, and I would hope that many within the town will come and attend that. It's always been quite moving, and their speaker is quite noted. And I think it'd be wonderful if we could make a point of trying to get her a microphone.
Excellent.
She doesn't have a microphone.
Oh. She doesn't have a microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I forgive everybody.
I think everyone heard. Any other councilman in communication?
I just have something. I just wanted to say that, as you know, every morning, usually on time, I bring my daughter to school. And you sit in line at DePaula for quite a while because there's so many cars. But I'm very proud to drive there in the morning, and I sit there and I'm almost forced to look at DePaula Middle School and the new calendar house. And I just want to say that in our community, I think we should all be proud that we can, A, afford to have buildings like that, and B, that people that are all sitting up here all took part in the construction of those buildings. And it's remarkable, every day, I'm in that real estate business, but I always lose sight of how beautiful things are. And DePaula Middle School and Kennedy, they're gorgeous, and the calendar houses as well. So I just wanted to say that, just something I notice every day when I'm on time. Mr. Palmeri.
Excellent, excellent. Any other councilperson in communication? I just have a couple. First of all, I'd just like to share with the public, the Board of Education has two budget workshops planned for this week. The first is tomorrow night at Hatton Elementary School in the Media Center, and the second is Thursday night right here in the Municipal Center. Both events are at 7:00 PM. These are budget workshops for the proposed 1920 budget. I don't know, maybe the manager? I don't think the budget workshops are... The question was, if you didn't hear, the question was, are those televised? I'm not sure the budget workshops are televised, but when they actually adopt the budget at the Board of Education meeting, that's televised. But I don't think workshops are, especially because they're in a school.
Exactly.
I just, again, as we start our first meeting, I'd just like to acknowledge our Public Works Department. We're very fortunate in our town as well. They did a great job with the decorations for a festive holiday season in both plants for Lynn Sutherland. So thanks to the Public Works Department. And then finally, the next council chat will be February 6th at 4:30. Again, it's a very informal opportunity for residents to come out and speak. The Vice Chair and myself will be in attendance. There is no set agenda. It's just a chance to talk informally. Some people don't feel comfortable coming up to a public meeting and following our set protocol for that, so it's just an informal opportunity for residents to reach out. Finally, as it's our last meeting since an incident that occurred in December, I'd like to share publicly with the community a joint statement that was issued by myself representing this board, the Sutherland Town Council, as well as Brian Gerauski as the Chairman of the Board of Education. I would like to stand and read this, and I think my fellow councilman would like to stand with me, just as a sign of solidarity for the statement we're about to read. So, the statement we issued read, "As your elected officials, we are writing to share our thoughts with all members of our community regarding the incident that occurred last week," now, again, this was dated December 20th, "in which an individual created and released a horrendous video filled with hatred targeted at some of our friends and neighbors. That incident garnered a great deal of negative media attention and cast a shadow on our wonderful, caring community. We are especially concerned for our children and families who were the targets of hate in that incident. The Sutherland Police Department completed its investigation and took action today," which, again, was December 20th. "In addition, there has been an increased police presence at schools within the Sutherland community. The presence could be viewed as increased security, however, the presence is also designed to reduce the anxiety surrounding the recent events and help support the educational environment. By working together, we are sending a strong message that any form of hatred, violence, or bigotry will not be tolerated in the Sutherland community. While we will never be able to control the words, beliefs, or actions of others, we can applaud the reactions of the many members of our community who have contacted officials to express their horror and condemnation of that event. We echo those sentiments. The response by our students, parents, members of our police department, and school officials should be applauded, and it's a true representation of the values of this community. The Sutherland Town Council, Sutherland Board of Education, and all duly elected and appointed officials denounce the ideology represented in the video that was circulated on social media. We will never condone, support, or tolerate behavior or beliefs that espouse hatred, violence, and bigotry. In collaboration with our public service agencies, we will continue to do our utmost to protect our students physically and emotionally, and to teach a message of kindness, caring, and respect for all. We support the efforts, both short and long term, of elected officials and public school officials to address the issues brought out by this event. The strong partnership between the Sutherland Police Department and the Board of Education has been validated over the recent weeks. The Board of Education continues to share concerns from parents, community members, and students as they are received. This information is then reviewed and investigated, and the outcome shared to the extent possible. The Board of Education then provides updates to parents, staff, and students. There are no easy solutions to the problems brought to the surface by this issue. In that respect, Sutherland is no different than any other community in this country that is wrestling with how to cope with the recent increase in these types of incidents nationwide. However, we will all band together as a community and continue to support the efforts of those individuals and agencies who seek to promote those values of caring, compassion, and respect that we all hold as central to our beliefs." And again, respectfully, this was submitted on behalf of the Sutherland Town Council and the Sutherland Board of Education. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In light of that statement, and also in light of some of the concerns that have been raised, I would like this body, under your direction, with all of our help, to establish community conversations. And it would include people from the public, of course, young people. I know you've already spoken to the Superintendent of Schools, and I applaud that so much that you've stepped out already in it. But I think it's incumbent upon us to have these community conversations, and open to any councilperson and any person within the community. But there are people within our community who have a certain expertise in this. I've spoken to Dory Conley Perigini and a number of others that I think would be very important for us as the Town Council to have the umbrella for these conversations. And perhaps we can talk at a future date a little bit more about a structure of it and how we see it going forward. But I do want to throw that on the table, Mr. Chairman, and I know all of us have Sutherland's best interest at heart, and I... And we stood together for a purpose and a reason, and I would like us to continue the conversation, if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. And this clearly was an issue. There was no political lines drawn with this at all. We all stood together, and I don't mean just us. And Councilman Pulis wishes he could be here with us this evening as well because of this message. But we all stood together, united, Town Council and Board of Education members as well. So what Councilwoman Triano was talking about is, I did reach out since Thursday's Board of Education meeting. There was a significant amount of people that came out to speak at the public communication portion of that meeting. The Superintendent has suggested forming, he's in the works of forming, a community coalition. What he's suggesting is periodically getting together, whether it be monthly, bi-monthly, with students, parents, community members, staff, and members of public agencies. And that does include some members of our own town staff, including youth services, community services, to try to have these community conversations. So I think that really complements that very well, so I think we're on the same page.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. To me, it's clear we're a community that is inclusive of all of our residents, and we should be behind the equality of everyone and will not tolerate racism in Sutherland. Our police department handles these situation in a professional manner. Our hiring practices, we have Ms. Passamano here, are open and inclusive. Our community is second to none in assisting all our citizens. We know every time that there's a resident in need, regardless of their background, people come forward, whether it be for a resident that's home burned down in a fire, or the lack of food in our food bank last year. Those are just two examples, but we certainly come together as a community for all events like that. Our recreational leagues are enjoyed by a diverse population. Town offers programming for children of all backgrounds. So I know we certainly are on the right track, but we certainly would welcome conversations with others if that's what needs to happen, and we'll pursue that.
Thank you.
Councilman Ricchio?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for not only writing the letter, but also reading it publicly. When this happened, my wife is very good friends with Dory, and Dory's here in the audience today. We asked her to come to our house for dinner, just so we could get a better understanding. My wife's working in a similar capacity at the high school in cultural competence. So it is pretty amazing that when you grow up... Sutherland is basically a community of privilege, okay? So when you grow up and you have that, you don't really... Race is not just about the color of someone's skin, it's about their culture. And I think in Sutherland, we like to think that we're a melting pot, but we might not really understand all the aspects of that. And I would really like to encourage you to include Dory. She's written a book about it. She's going for her doctorate in linguistic studies. So I think it's important to have her as part of that conversation. In the two or three hours that she was at her house, you know, my knowledge and information level rose significantly. And I shared a story, I think, I shared a story with Dory, but it's not that long ago. There's a lot of Italians, many Italians sitting up here in this council. As a kid, my grandfather used to tell us stories how when he came here from Italy, and he were walking up Center Street with his friends, and Bradley Barnes and his contemporaries were walking down the sidewalk, the Italians were expected to step into the gutter to let them pass. And my father was so embarrassed of his Italian heritage that he forced himself to not acknowledge his heritage at the time, to the point where he wouldn't have kids over after school. And so it's one generation removed, but now the Italians in Sutherland are part of the culture, and we're all, you know, it's not the same as it used to be. And so it's easy in one generation how things are forgotten. So to have a community conversation, not just once, but on an ongoing basis, year after year after year after year, I think is important. And so I would definitely ask you to include Dory in on that, to help the structure of it, based on her background.
And just to be clear, the Superintendent made it clear, his intent is not for it to be a one-time conversation. He, again, monthly, bi-monthly, and not just short-term, but to continue it. The other thing that's of note, just for us, I just want to acknowledge Christina Sims, because with our youth services, she works really well with Jen Paul, who's a teacher at the high school, who runs their multicultural student union. I know Jen personally, she was a former Sutherland Teacher of the Year, sorry, Sutherland Teacher of the Year, but she runs the multicultural student union at the high school. So Christina is going to be working with her and that organization as well, so I think that will assist us as well. Any other comments related to this? Okay. So, our next item on the agenda is something brand-new this evening, and I'm very excited to share with all of you, members of the council, as well as the public that's here tonight, and those of you at home as well. We know in our town staff, we have employees that really go above and beyond the call of duty. So there's obviously, there's the workday, and then there's the commitment and the level of expertise that you bring to the town, above and beyond what's called of you with your contract, if you will. So this, tonight, we would like to recognize our first employee that we're recognizing as part of our employee recognition program, which is named Exceeding Expectations. So to kick off the event, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Michelle Passamano, our Human Resources Manager, and she'll introduce a little bit more.
Great. Thank you very much. We also, throughout the town, have been pretty excited with what took place when we introduced Exceeding Expectations with everything new, you know, something new, everybody gets a little, "Ah, you know, how is it really going to play out?" So we took it, we made the decision after meeting that we would have four different times that someone would be recognized at a Town Council meeting. And so we divided the different departments so that it really captured approximately 60 employees with each recognition. So it broke it down pretty nicely. And so with the first recognition, we introduced it as, "This is your opportunity to share what someone may be in your own department or another department has, that you've witnessed have gone above and beyond," whether it just be being kind, taking, you know, taking a project and taking it to the next level. Whatever it is, just something that really gives somebody an opportunity to shine. And sometimes, a little, you know, bit of kind words to someone, it goes a lot further than you could ever imagine. And I think that is really what we found after receiving... We received 11 nominations for our first round, which, again, I think that that's pretty amazing, based on a first time.
Wonderful.
And this year, we had the opportunity to meet with our committee. And with the committee, we did select someone from within the town, and he is with the Department of Water Pollution Control. He's been working in the SOAR department. And I'm just going to let you know a little bit of what was said. The gentleman's name is Dave Bilargian, Bilargian. And we met with, while he was nominated by Kari Williams. Kari Williams is the Assistant Superintendent over at Water Pollution Control. But I had the opportunity to meet with also Keith Hayden. And Keith Hayden worked a little bit and has known Dave for a while, and I asked him if he could also share a couple things. So before I have Kari come up here and actually tell you firsthand why he nominated Dave, I thought I would just let you know that, in addition to what Kari feels and the rest of the team, Keith Hayden said that you're very, you're self-motivated, you always have a positive demeanor, you are an out-of-the-box thinker. And I think he, what really brought it full circle, he said, "You are the person who single-handedly brought the electronics of the Water Pollution Control Department into this century." So if that doesn't say, I don't know what does. But without further ado, I'd like to introduce Kari Williams so that he can share a few more words about Dave.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like Michelle said, my name is Kari Williams. I'm the Assistant Superintendent at a Water Pollution Control facility. I nominated Dave for the employee that I felt exceeded expectations. Dave has been in the field for approximately 35 years now. He has a wealth of knowledge and wisdom when it comes to wastewater and electronics. It's pretty hard to top what Keith Hayden said about him, but I have to say, everything he said is the truth. Dave is very patient. He's, like I say, he's very knowledgeable, always willing to help not only myself, but his coworkers and all of the staff at the Water Pollution Control. On a personal note, Dave, right now, is helping me install some equipment that helps us monitor the remote list stations, I guess, better throughout the town. He does a lot of work out there, and while he's out there, I'll go out there and question him, and he has more than enough patience to answer all my questions, even though I know at some point in time, he has to be thinking, "Man, this guy is slowing me down a little bit." But I think Keith Hayden is right. Dave really does think out of the box. One of his favorite things to say to me is, "Kari, how do we get 110% out of this equipment? Not only what the manufacturer has told us that the equipment can do, but how could we tweak it to work even better than the manufacturer knows that it can work? How could we tweak it to the point where the manufacturer is calling us, thinking, 'Whoa, you're the first people to ever think about doing it this way, and this is something that we could kind of push forward on whoever else buys the equipment.'" Be short, I just think Dave is a really good guy, not only in the plant, but from what I know about him personally, he's a really good guy. Keith said he's self-motivated. I have to say that is the truth. Just thanks for being here. We're happy to have you.
Excellent. So with that, if I can ask Dave Bilargian to come on up and join us on the diocese. I have a presentation, a certificate of appreciation for you. So this is in recognition for Dave's hard work, dedication, and positive influence on others, and having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the town of Sutherland, is hereby awarded the certificate of appreciation for exceeding expectations.
I just want to say thanks. I'm humbled with this type of award, and I just want to state that it's a team effort with all of the people that are at the plant, that we all work together for the best result that we can. And I'm just happy that we can get to this point all together, and we're not done yet.
As a taxpayer in the town of Sutherland, thank you, sir. Thank you for your diligence.
So if we could, we'll call a five-minute recess. There's some cookies, coffee over there, if you'd like. We'll call a brief five-minute recess, and we can maybe get a picture with Dave with his award and the members of the council. Thank you, and we'll be back in five minutes. Okay, so thank you very much. We'll call the meeting back to order. We're continuing on with our agenda. Each month, the first meeting of every month, we have been hearing from different departments to give us an overview of aspects within their purview. So tonight, we thought it was timely. We have Amelia Portalina, our Director of Finance, here tonight. As we enter our budget season, you heard me mention earlier, we have two budget workshops this week. We thought it would be very timely to share with the public where we stand with our finances and talk a little bit more about the budget season that's upon us. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amelia.
Okay, well, there we go. Thank you, Town Council members, Council Chairman Palmeri, and the audience. Sorry, let's try this. Okay. Today, I'll be covering pretty much three fiscal years. We were, to begin with, the town has recently completed, or had our audit recently completed for fiscal year 2018, and that would be 2017-18. We received what's called an unqualified clean audit opinion, which basically means that the town's financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with accounting regulations. The general fund had a fund balance increase, or an operational surplus for the fiscal year, of $1,009,000. And this is due to a combination of increased tax collections, which were due to more aggressive tax collections. We had a tax sale, and as anybody can recall, or as some people can recall, at the end of fiscal year, at the end of calendar 2017, we had the Tax Reform Act 2017, which capped property tax deductions. Those all helped our tax collections come in higher than we had anticipated. In addition to that, we had aggregate cost savings as a result of several departments. So that's where the $1.9 million came from. As a result of this, our unassigned or free fund balance for the general fund, as of June 30th, is now $22.7 million, or 13.8% of operating revenues. There was a presentation that was done at the Board of Finance meeting. Unfortunately, this is listed, this was done on the 9th. The town has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for our audit for fiscal year 2017, and that would be our 27th certificate. And we're applying currently for our 28th, which was for the audit of 2018. So the paperwork was submitted to that effect.
Amelia, before you move on, I just want to acknowledge you and your staff for the excellence in that department. So we appreciate the award, but we know what an exceptional job you do in your department. So thank you very much.
It's like I say all the time, it's a group effort within my department, within the administration. It goes Board of Finance, Council. It's with the help of everyone that we can put this document together, and that we do such an outstanding job that's recognized. So it's definitely a group effort. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we have on our website, on the finance page under the town website, we do have all our audits and budgets, adopted budgets, and all that information. So anybody can, you know, go online, take a look at them. And obviously, if they have any questions, whether it be the council, the Board of Finance, or members of the public, if you have any questions on any of the information, please do not hesitate to contact me, and I'll be more than happy to explain it.
Can I ask one question for you?
Absolutely.
Just for the public's knowledge, the $22.7 million for the general fund balance, what is the desired range that we want, or the required range, and why do we want that? If you could just explain that to the public.
Sure. Basically, we have a policy that we are to maintain at least a 10% floor of our free fund balance in order for us to cover any opportunities or emergencies that we might encounter. It's also, the unassigned fund balance is what's evaluated by credit agencies. When we bond, they look to see that we're in a good financial situation, and part of what they measure is what you have as a reserve.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions? Any questions on the audit? Now we're going to our current fiscal year, which is 2018-2019 budget. And obviously, since this is January, we're six months into the year. And the first piece of this would be the general fund revenues. If you look to these numbers, basically every month or several times a month, I look at the information and calculate where we are. Currently, our interest on taxes is about $10,000 over what we'd estimate at this time. Interest on investments, $300,000 above budget. Town clerk fees, $145,000 above budget. And then we received a KERMA equity and interest for about $104,000, sorry, which means that overall, currently, six months into the year, we're about $559,000 above budget on the revenue side, which is very good. Looking at the general fund expenditures, again, the same six months in, our expenditures are coming in as budgeted, which is really great. Currently, there are no projected large expenditures that we're going to be requiring an additional large appropriations. We do have situations where certain line items run out and individuals request transfers and so forth, so forth. But right now, we're not projecting any large deficits. That obviously can change at any time. We haven't really hit that four letter word, the snow season, so we'll see how that goes. The town still has not utilized any of the 1.8 million contingency that we do have in this year's budget.
Sorry, I have another question.
Sure.
What happens if we don't use that contingency? What happens to it?
It goes back into the fund balance unless it's appropriated specifically for something else, which would be the Board of Finance and town council's decisions. I'm not sure that we're out of the woods yet with the state, but we haven't heard of any changes to the budget in this current year yet. So that's, we're in a good place considering that that's still kind of a little bit of a question mark. Okay, any questions on current budget? Now we're moving on to next year's budget, which is what we're currently working on. So at a given point, we could be working on three different fiscal years at the same time. But this is the schedule that we currently have set up for the fiscal year 2020 budget, 1920. And the first item on here is February 18, 2019, which is when the 10 town managers' proposed budget is due to the Board of Finance. There might be a slight change in that schedule.
If I may, Amelia, yes, I already spoke, obviously, with the chairman and the minority leader and I spoke with the Board of Finance. The new governor will not be submitting his budget until February 20th. So I'm going to ask for a formal vote of this board on the, your meeting on the 28th, but obviously, I want to get permission from the Board of Finance first because it's that board I have to submit to. They, in fact, not only agreed, they encouraged it because I'm not going to have the revenues on the 18th, so the budget is going to, is obviously going to be a false budget. I have to assume last year's revenues and that can cause major problems. So they've all agreed that they want it to the 22nd and I'll ask for formal action since the charter will require a formal action for this board at your meeting on the 28th. And all the other dates will stay the same, so that's the only date that moves.
Right, and if you just looked at this, March 4th will be the Board of Finance public hearing. March 27th, the Board of Finance proposed budget will be done. On April 22nd, the town council public hearing. May 13th, town council adopts the budget and on May 15th, the Board of Finance sets the mill rate. In preparation for the 1920 budget, the town manager set out his expectations to the departments. He would like us to provide level services budget, taking into consideration inflation, employee raises, et cetera. He'd like us to review all services, looking to eliminate any services which are no longer effective or of no interest to the residents. He would like us to submit new initiatives which will enhance operations separately and these new initiatives will not be considered unless there are offsets, which would be like the elimination of lowest priority items. And finally, departments should prepare a 5% list, a list eliminating 5% of their current year's budget describing programs that are lowest priority should something occur and we need to utilize that. And we're always to look to substantive changes rather than merely delaying expenditures, which basically means that when you're looking to cuts, make some real change as opposed to just taking expenditures and moving into the next fiscal year. Because that's the only way that we can handle any real change that comes through. Okay, our major challenges for fiscal year 2019-2020. Governor Lamont pledges to improve state's fiscal situation. That's a great first step, so we'll have to see how that goes. But there are questions. How will the state address the huge budget deficit projections? Fiscal year 2019-2020, its projection to be $1.7 billion. Fiscal year 2020-2021, the deficit is currently projected at $2.3 billion. So those are huge obstacles that they need to overcome and we need to keep a good eye on what exactly they're anticipating doing and how that'll affect not only us on a state level, but also in the town level. The other item that I think is not quite dead yet is will the state shift the teachers' retirement contributions to municipalities? That was brought up last year and I think that the state has such a large liability with respect to teachers' retirement that there's still going to be the possibility that they'll try to shift it onto the municipalities to get municipalities to help to pay some of this. Just to give you some idea, for fiscal year 2018, the state paid in $16.6 million for pensions and $1.7 million for other post employment benefits for Southington alone. So we're talking about huge numbers. Do we have any questions on the budget? I'm sure we'll have a lot more conversations going forward.
Oh, yes.
Because this is just beginning.
We have a lot more months of questions.
Right.
Okay, and then I just wanted to give you a little information on compiling a budget and determining the required mill rate. Basically, and this is probably more for the public, what we do is we look at the town and Board of Ed expenditures and from that point, we subtract all the estimated revenues and other current tax, other than current taxes. So we look at everything other than taxes and then we determine what the taxes, which taxes are needed or what dollar amount is needed in order to cover the expenses. So we'll take the taxes needed, net the uncollected, divide it by the net grand list and come up with the mills needed to pay for the services that we're, that we have in the expenditure accounts there. Any questions? Okay, what is a mill? One mill is approximately $4 million right now. To reduce the mill rate by one mill, we need to either reduce expenditures by $4 million, increase other revenues by $4 million. When I say other revenues, other than taxes, obviously, property taxes, or increase the property on the net grand list by $131 million in order to get the $4 million. To calculate your property tax, you multiply your assessment of the property by the mill rate and divide it by 1,000, which is fairly a simple calculation. For example, a property with an assessed value of $100,000 located in Southington with a mill rate of 30.48 would have a property tax bill of $3,048 per year. Do, does, do I have any questions or is there something I can?
Councilman Lombardi?
I do. Thank you, Amelia, for the presentation. I think it's always important to, you know, bring the education to the public for those who are either new to government or whatever. But I have a question regarding the general fund balance increase.
Sure.
So the 1.9 million from fiscal year 18, that's less than 2% of our overall budget. Can you talk, I'll address two questions and then you can answer.
Sure, sure.
Can you address the source of that? Was it town or Board of Ed? Like where did, why was there a surplus?
1.9?
Yeah, let me finish my question first. What was the source of those funds? Why did the town have a surplus? And number two is, you know, I know you have a great amount of experience in the government finance world. At what point do you say, at what point do you use the term over taxation? Okay, we had a $1.9 million operational surplus last year.
Correct.
You've said that there's 1.8 in contingency that we haven't used yet, which is, it's a little early to talk about that. But at what point does your department, talk with the town manager, talk with the Board of Finance, when do you use that word, over taxation?
I think that the 1.9 million was as a result of our tax collections coming in faster than what we anticipated and us collecting overdue taxes that didn't necessarily, weren't anticipated to be paid this year. Okay, and I think a lot of it had to do with the tax change that occurred and people wanting to get that extra benefit on their taxes for 2017 because it was going to be capped in 2018. So in that respect, that was a big portion of it. Plus, we also had some surpluses within the departments for projects. And we've always indicated to departments that it's, you ask for what you need and if you don't need it, then you give it back. We don't have departments who go out and spend everything they have because they have it. So we've kind of always encouraged that. To your second, so that's what makes up a lot of that surplus. It was extra revenue and not spending all the expenditure money.
From the town side budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and some of it was also, some of that surplus was then also carried forward into the new year. Okay, so we had 1.1 million.
On the town side.
Yeah, on town and we had a little bit that the Board of Ed carried forward as well.
Right.
Okay, so that handles that address. As far as when are we over taxing? We're not taxing people in order to get a surplus. The surplus is a result of different efficiencies. We actually had a really uncertain year in 2018 where we weren't sure how the state was going to be doing anything, right? As far as that, they cut us several million dollars. Then we had to come up with a budget deficit allocation plan. We reallocated money back to them because we wanted to get any more ECS money than they had originally told us. So there was a whole combination of issues that were going on at that given time. Obviously, the decision is, at any point, it's the decision of the administration, the Board of Finance, and the town council to say, you know, is this too much? Are we taxing the individuals too much? That's not our, when we put the budget together, we're not intending to tax people too much. That's not our point. We're not trying to add to the fund balance. That's just something that's occurring currently. We are also, we also have a plan in place where any excess fund balance will be utilized to cash fund one-time capital projects. So that's definitely helped us in the last few years as far as that goes. But it's ultimately the decision of the administration, the Board of Finance, and the council as far as the expenditures and how that gets changed. We're just pretty much asking for what we feel we need for services while we're trying to be cognizant of how much we're taxing individuals. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does.
There was one other one, Amelia, and that was the interest on investment was much higher last year.
Yes.
Last fiscal year than we anticipated.
Correct.
While all of us who have anything in the stock market saw what the stock market did and other things.
Correct.
I saw one more.
The Fed rates, absolutely.
Clarification that I think is important for you to mention to the council.
Sure.
And the public. Can you talk about the firm that does the audit and their qualifications, their reputation in the market, and the process and the interactions that your department has with them?
Certainly. Bloom Shapiro does a very, is one of the largest CPA firms that does municipal audits in the state of Connecticut. I would say, I haven't checked recently, but I would say that they would audit at least 80% of the municipalities. So they're very, they're very knowledgeable in this area. They do come in and they review all our information. They check our internal controls. They question everything. We provide them with the information that they request. We answer all the questions that they have. We have a very good working relationship. It's actually kind of interesting because over the last few years, they've changed the group that comes in and audits us. So it's almost as if every year, we get kind of a fresh set of eyes on it because they just keep changing out their groups. There are people that come in to audit us. So I'm happy with their work and they seem to be happy with how we're handling things as well.
Councilman Barry?
Thank you, Amelia, for all your work and your staff.
Absolutely.
One of the major challenges for any municipality is the budget schedule that you outlined.
Yes.
Because it's highly unlikely that the state of Connecticut will have a budget adopted before we adopt our budget. So that's always a challenge for us as a community and a lot of communities. So I understand the previous questions about over taxation and things like that, which are really important because we don't want to overtax anyone. One of the, I want to thank you and the administration and the council and the Board of Finance last year with the 0% tax increase with all the state uncertainty, we were able to manage to do that. So I want to thank you and everyone involved in that real, that real hard process of the budget last year. So I guess my question to you is, we anticipate the state, the earliest they would probably have a budget would be sometime in June. What is, is there any way we could, I know we have in the past, and it would just be a vote of the council, if we wanted to delay an adoption of a town budget? What is the last possible date we could do that?
I really think that last year, we did it in June, I believe.
Yeah.
And we really didn't get, from the middle of May to the middle of June, when we delayed it.
Yeah.
We really got no additional information.
Right.
And that just happened that way. It could have happened that we did. But in this case, last year, they, the budget wasn't adopted until, I believe it was the beginning of November.
Yeah, there was a lot of delays and there's a lot of challenges.
Right.
So we, in your budget document that your presentation today outlined, you know, the challenges the state has going forward.
Correct.
Maybe they won't be as bad because it seems like revenues are coming in better on the state level and we see them coming in better on our level. So I just wanted to throw that out because I don't know if that would help the town situation in delaying a budget once we have firm numbers from the state. But you made a good point that who knows when the state will actually adopt and we could be waiting forever and we obviously can't do that.
Right. And it just happened that last year, we really didn't get any additional information from that month.
Two years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't last year's budget.
Two years ago.
Two years ago was when we had the issue. Last year, we didn't delay it. It was two years ago. We had to delay it because we didn't have any information from the state. In fact, we didn't even know what formula they're going to use to give us our statement.
Correct. It all.
But you all set?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Lombardi?
I just want to reiterate, and Amelia, I'll be emailing you tomorrow.
Sure.
But Councilman Barry seems to continue to forget that the 0% tax increase that the town endured was because of a last minute cash influx from the state. So I'm going to email you tomorrow so we can get those facts down so that when this issue comes up, yes, we are grateful for 0% tax increase, but it was a last minute gift that this, that this town received.
In part.
So it's not.
In part, not in full, but in part. Absolutely agree.
Yeah, and I think we all thanked our legislative delegation for working hard to look out for us as a community, so that's a good point. Absolutely. But I think we've made some real hard decisions on the council. The administration have, the new town manager, Mark Shoda, presented a really lean budget last year. It was his first budget. So I think a lot of credit has to go to our town workers and establishing a budget that really put taxpayers first. So thank you very much.
And I'll be more than happy to provide any information that any of the council members need.
Okay, any other questions? Amelia, thank you. This was a great overview, especially leading into the four months we have ahead of us. So thank you for sharing it with us as well as with the public. So, thank you for sharing it with us, as well as with the public, to keep everyone informed of the process. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good, have a good evening. Okay, so, moving on to the agenda, we have many special committees to report on tonight, seeing as we only had one meeting in December. So, first of all, we'll start with the Apple Harvest Festival Committee. I have two major items to talk about tonight. The first is our budget. Let me pass them this way. This is about as close as we're going to be. So, while the budget is being distributed, while Amelia's here too, I'd just like to, again, thank Amelia and your department, especially Anne Anop, and the Finance Department, for really helping us streamline the process. She was exceptional to work with, so please pass that along to her. She did a great job. So, as of right now, and we do still have two items outstanding, but they're small amounts. One is, thank you, one is in the amount of $175, the other is in the amount of $50 that are still outstanding. So, at this point, I think we're in a good place to present the budget. So, all things said and done, the final profit for this year's festival was $13,725. What's important to know, and we mentioned this at the last committee meeting, which was last week, this does take into account, unfortunately, we had to write off a loss of approximately $3,560, one of which the town attorney got involved, because we couldn't claim, we couldn't claim fees that were owed to us. So, it just became, it came to the point where it was easier to write it off than to try to pursue and go through legal hurdles for that, as well as a reduction in community donations. So, between those two anticipated income items, between the loss and the community donations, it would have been $3,560 higher on the profit side, but we're still very pleased, $13,725 profit for the 50th Anniversary Apple Harvest Festival. Any questions about the budget? Mr. Lombardi?
Can we just request through you, I guess, that the town clerk scan this in to the minutes for tonight's meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Again, Melissa Erickson-Cocozza, who is our festival coordinator this year, did an exceptional job. Not only did she manage the sponsors, but she also was the festival coordinator. So, just like to acknowledge and thank her again for all her hard work for the 2018 50th Anniversary Festival. The other item that we have on for action later on in the agenda under Old Business Item D is the Apple Harvest Festival, Apple Harvest Supervisor. We have a little bit of a different proposal for this year, and obviously, the Apple Harvest Festival is one of the largest recreational events our town offers every year. So, the committee met and discussed, we did put out a posting for the festival coordinator position, and after conversations to that end, the committee came to a consensus to make a recommendation to go a slightly different route for next year. As I mentioned, it is a very large recreational event for the town of Southington, so we'd like to actually move the festival coordination underneath the Recreation Department. So, with that, we have two employees that are part of the Recreation Department, Dave LaPray and Julia Bardinelli. Dave is the Director of Recreation for the town, and Julia's his assistant, and they really work together. We know that there will be some overlaps, some natural overlap, between, again, a recreational event in town, but there's also going to be hours spent outside of the workday to coordinate the festival. So, with that, we would, we would propose adding a stipend that will be paid for from the Apple Harvest Festival Committee budget, a stipend for both those employees. The town manager has reached out to the two bargaining units that are associated, and I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Briefly, obviously, our concern was the fact that, because obviously, these are all collective bargaining positions, I wanted to make sure, as the town's administrator, that these particular stipends would not be under the union umbrella. These, this would not become collective bargaining work. So, I thank both the unions involved here, and I thank Michelle, our HR Director, for working out an MOU with the unions, simply saying that these positions, they're in essence an at-will position based upon the Apple Harvest Committee. If it works out, we can continue it next year and the year after. If it doesn't work out, we say, okay, we tried, it didn't work. These aren't, these do not become collective bargaining work positions. So, therefore, although they still always report to me, these particular stipend positions will be under the monetary jurisdiction of the Apple Harvest Committee. So, I thank both the unions, I thank both the employees. Specifically, the numbers we're talking about is that the position, Mr. LaPray's position, stipend position will be $15,000, and then Julia's position will be $5,000. Now, knowing that, the current, the one with the contract that just expired was $25,000. So, when we met as a committee, we felt that using $20,000 was because, I know some of the work will be done during the day, when they're already being compensated for, so therefore, we chose the figure of $20,000. They agreed to that figure, and obviously, the Apple Harvest Committee recommends that figure to you tonight.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, our town manager, Mr. Shoda. I find no problem, other than the fact that we do need time for a review after this year. So, I am not opposed necessarily to approve this for a period of a year, to see how it goes. I'm glad you even said that, Mark, because I think it's a whole new, different direction for the festival.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need some, some space to really look at it, do a critical review, and see if it's worked the way we hoped it would. You know, the individuals mentioned are terrific, and I'm sure they'll work very hard, but just for our own well-being for the town.
Yeah, and that actually isn't a change. All these contracts really are year-to-year. So, in the past, as well as moving forward, they are on a yearly basis. We're also very fortunate, too, to have the synergy with Melissa, who, as the council members, we already approved as our sponsor coordinator. So, Melissa is back with us, Melissa Cocozza, in the role of sponsorship coordinator, so hopefully, we'll even exceed the amount of sponsorship dollars she brought in this year. So, she really did an exceptional job.
Chris, just a comment, it was brought to my attention, and also, marching in the parade, I saw, it appeared as though the crowd was lower this year. I don't know if there's a correlation between the two, but I know the committee made a conscious decision not to pay people to participate in the parade, or to the level that we have in the past. And my feeling is that the parade is an event that's supposed to be an entertainment event, and sometimes you have to pay for entertainment. And so, I see, don't see it as an expense, but as a, an investment in an entertainment series, where if you bring in some of the professionals, a lot of times, they bring crowds with them, that would then patronize all the booths, and the food, and drinks, and so. As it moves forward, I might reconsider making that investment back in the festival, because I think you, maybe not directly to these numbers, but the people that pay $95,000 of booth fees, which are mostly, you know, a lot of our civic organizations might reap the benefit of that.
So, to that, you'll be pleased to hear. So, first of all, with the parade, we, the committee doubled the amount that was spent this year on the parade, so we budgeted double the amount for next year. We also decided to maintain in our budget for next year, and it is a break-even budget right now, so we feel we can do this. Two items that we brought as part of the 50th, that we're going to maintain, that were crowd favorites, and to your point, that we feel brought in tons of people to the downtown area. The laser light show, we're maintaining that. That was a huge addition, people loved it, so we're keeping that in, and we're going to try to maintain a national act as well. So, those two things really did bring in a lot of people that were, with new energy to the downtown area. So, we're trying to maintain both. It is included in our budget, and we doubled the amount spent on the parade from this year. So, I think we've accomplished all that. We looked at what we can, and you heard already, there was some savings, obviously, in different areas, so we're trying to reinvent and stick to a responsible budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other, any other questions related to the Apple Harvest Festival Committee? And I'd just like to acknowledge Councilman Lombardi, Town Attorney Shoda, and Jack Perry, who serve on the committee with me, so thank you.
I'll never get over that title.
Did I say town attorney? Oh, I'm sorry, town manager. I'm looking right at you, town. Sorry.
I'm branded forever.
Okay, so, moving on to Item B is Farm Heritage. We have co-chair of the Farm Heritage Committee, Ed Pocock, to give his report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the invite tonight. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, anyways, so I have a bunch of stuff to report today for the Farm Heritage Committee. We've had a lot of work that we're doing. I left maps out for everyone tonight. Let me address the, the big issue that I know has been, has been bantered around. I'll start with the easy one first. Pleasantview Stables, which is now just really an empty lot. The plan that you have in front of you was much discussion between the folks on the committee as how to make this work probably as best as possible. We have a report that'll be coming out, that'll be much more in-depth, but as for now, this is the visual that we'll have. And this is pretty much centric around the needs of OAG. The location of this is perfect, between the high school and the Apollo, and of course, you have the Calendar House next door. So, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, synergy going on here between this lot and the rest of them. So, we really kind of made that part of this. The report is going to show this in many phases. We're going to hit the low-hanging, low-cost fruit first, and eventually, the goal is to have a barn and a resource center here, so that you can actually do educational farming, and maybe have a couple spots where people can, if they want to experiment in farming in some kind of way, they can do that. Like, these fields could be something where you have bees, you could do a bunch of other things. So, we're working on that now, but that's, that's the easy one. But this is tied into the Grozky plot, which is the second one. And on that one, of course, those of you that go by there often, of course, there's a structure that's not on there, and of course, it's the Grozky barn. That was a lot of discussion. For me, I can tell you personally, I spent a lot of time in that barn as a kid, draft horses, raising steers, paling hay, putting hay in the barn, loading the silo. A lot of special memories in that barn for me. So, but ultimately, when you're on the committee, you have to separate those personal things from what's real. So, the first concern we had is, like Pleasant Street, we are concerned about the historical, because I know that's been, that's been said by some folks that have called me, and I just want to make it clear that, you know, if you walk in that barn, you're going to see hand-hewn beams in there. And of course, most people, when they see hand-hewn beams, the first thing they think of is, oh, this thing's got to be historical, you know, 1800s. You have to understand something, the Grozky family was a very, very clever family. They had, where Hunting Hill is now, they had a mill there, a sawmill. It's kind of hard to believe that there was a sawmill over in that side of town, but they were pretty commonplace with the family farms. So, that sawmill, most of those beams that were in there were hewn from that sawmill. I remember as a kid, because it was so loud, I used to get scared, and I wanted to get out of there, because it was just an amazing racket. But the bottom line is, that barn probably was built in the 70s, so that barn is no more historical than anybody in this room. I mean, so there was no historical value of the barn. So, putting that aside, you know, I mean, maybe somebody might be, but certainly not me. So, then the next question comes up is, you know, what, how does this work practically into our plan? I'm not into taking barns down, didn't like it when Pleasantview went down, I certainly don't like what Grozky's thinking about it, but the problem we're having with Grozky is, you know, if you have a family farm, and little Timmy's on crutches, you don't have to worry about Timmy getting into the barn. Timmy's going to have to manage with the family to get in the barn and take care of things the way he needs to. But this isn't a family barn anymore, it's a town barn. So, little Timmy getting in there on crutches is an issue. You want to make sure that, you know, it's compliant. I can tell you, from working in a barn, there's a lot of things in there that never will be compliant. And if you go to start to work in it, it's going to be, it's going to be something we're going to have to address. Now, how much is that on our mind? It's not something I'm just coming here to report to you on, that it's, you know, some minor issue is an excuse. Even the stand that's being built, Bill Heath is putting in shelving, if you've been by there. The shelving that's going in is being put in in a way, so that if somebody got out of a handicap van, was in a wheelchair, they can enjoy that stand just as much as anybody else can that walks in there. And eventually, it'll be landscaped. So, there's a lot of thought that the Farm Heritage Committee's had in this. And keep in mind, too, if somebody can come along and save that barn, as I said to the caravans when they were talking, because they're storing their hay there, and so are we, as I mentioned to them, until we build a barn on Pleasant Street, the Grozky barn can't go anywhere. We have to have somewhere to put our hay. They can't store it over at the Apollo. So, it'd probably be at least seven years before we even, realistically, the Grozky barn would even think about being torn down. Maybe in that time, and we left it open in the report, somebody can come along and save that barn and build it up. And if they can, I'd love to have two. Just remember, though, everything we do in our plan has a purpose, you know, because, as I've said to several people that asked me, farm heritage isn't a place, right? It's an action. It's an action statement. And it's changing. You know, when I was a kid, they had the dairy farms, then steers. All that stuff is kind of going away now. Farming, you know, around here is much different. Leaf, for example, that's a completely different type of farming. And we've taken great efforts down there to protect those properties. And I think sometimes that's forgotten, is remember, you have a cold storage building down there, that we completely redid the roof with our capital funds. So, there's been a lot of efforts there. So, I'm getting a little long-winded on this, but I just want to let you know that we are, we look at this stuff very deeply when we're, when we're making these reports. And anybody have any questions on these? I mean, there was a lot of discussion went on, and I know there was a lot of thoughts.
So, we plan on formally presenting this, like I alluded to, the entire plan, probably in the March meeting. We still, we don't have a meeting for January, we'll meet in February again, and, and put the final touches on this, and then we'll, the plans will officially be approved by the Council, so not our committee. Councilman Riquel.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, just a couple of comments. So, when we, I think one of my biggest regrets as a councilman is voting to tear down the barn on Pleasant Street. I still don't agree that we couldn't have saved it, but I was in the minority there. I fully supported and probably harassed the Grozky family, I lived across the street from the granddaughter, to save this property. And in my mind, it was to save it, knowing full well that barn is built in the 70s, it's all modern construction, for the character of the neighborhood. It's a red barn, it's got white fences with cows, we used to walk our kids there to feed the, feed the animals. In my mind, that's where this property was headed, was to eventually put up a fence, get cows back on there, or horses, or something, because there are people in town, caravans as an example, that might have the opportunity to use this. So, to tear the barn down is not, there's nothing historical about it, it's, it's neighborhood character. And I remember Tom and I kind of went back and forth, we were on opposite sides of buying this property, and that was my argument, was that, you know, we need to preserve the character, it's a very small piece of property. We don't need any more open space. And so, if we go around, and I see we're building one on Pleasant Street, but there's, to me, there's not heritage in just land. We have open space, we have an open space committee. I see there's sledding on here. I applaud the effort to be kind of creative here, but we have sledding hills all over the place. There's a sledding hill that the town residents are, have the ability to go over to slopers now and sled over there. So, in my mind, this property should, and I'm willing to take, take on the task of getting that barn restored, but this property should be a farm. It should be, it should have cows there, or, or horses, or something, my personal opinion, along with the fruit stand that you've donated to, I applaud you on that. But to have a sledding hill in the winter, and I think is not the vision that should have taken place here. I do like what's going on in the Pleasant Street thing, I'm happy to see that a barn will go back up there. Again, that place at the Apollo School, you used to always see the kids go there feeding the horses and everything, that's part of the heritage of our community that I don't see in either of these, as far as animals go. So, if the Council wishes, I'd be happy to champion. I got two calls the week that this came up at our prior council meeting, I think it was in December. People that live in the area said, hey, Mike, if you, if you try and save that barn, we'll help financially.
Fabulous.
So, I'm happy to do it. If Council wants to give it a try, and seven years is a long time to raise money, I'm pretty confident that I can make that happen.
I can't say disagree with any of his points. I guess one of the things that's important to understand is, that barn now, let's, for instance, now, because we've had this discussion, I would love to have the caravans put steers over there, I've mentioned that to them, but the problem you have with that is, you know, understand the cycle of, you know, raising steers. You put them into the field, then after you're done having them in the field, you bring them in the barn. you bring them in the barn. The barn is what keeps it warm enough so that your water don't freeze in the wintertime. There's no heating unit in the barn. So, Mr. Grozky was a pretty clever guy. On the north side, he had his sawdust bin. On the west side, he had his silage. On the east side, he had the horses. So, the cattle, when they were in, kept it, it was warm. I mean, it was hot when you went in there to work in the wintertime in the coldest days. These are all concerns. I mean, if you go to put cattle in there, it's got to be used. So, what I wouldn't want to see is folks donate to create something, and then in the long run realize, nobody's going to want to spend the time to go over there and raise steers. I mean, it's a full-time job. I used to do it. You know, you're there three times a day. You can't say no. There is no getting sick. You know, the animals have to be fed because they're in stanchions. So, all these things are good, and we've had these discussions. And, I mean, I would love to see the animals there, too. And I talked to the caravans about that. But if somebody was to step up, I think it's a two-step thing. And we've had these discussions on the Farm Heritage Committee ad nauseam, really, because I would like to see animals there personally. I'd love to see horses there, again. But, you know, horses don't generate heat enough, and you have to have water in the barn, and it'll freeze. And then, of course, electrically, the way that's currently, I don't want Mr. Show to give me too much of dirty looks on that, but don't go there. That is basically what I'm getting. So, I'm going to leave it at that. But if it can be redone, and there's something that can be done, I'm all in favor. I'll be the first one to say, if we could restore that and bring it and get it so it looks beautiful in that neighborhood, great. But...
And our conversations, in fact, the minutes from our meetings even say that. Mike, we knew, and remember, this barn is going nowhere until we get the other barns. So, we just figured to be fiscally responsible, we probably can't afford two different barns. So, with that being said, the relationship we have with Voag and the educational connection, really, it made more sense to put the barn on Pleasant Street. So, with that being said, if, you know, if you or someone else wants to contribute funds to maintain that barn, but from what our town staff said, and I did bring it back to the committee after our last council meeting, and, you know, hearing that it was built in the 70s and the way it was constructed, it just didn't seem feasible. But, again, the plan is for it to go nowhere. In fact, we stressed that while these are two separate master plans you have before you, that one is dependent on the other. So, Pleasant Street is dependent upon Grozky because of the barn. And we know that Voag, right now, all their hay is being stored there. They need a spot to do that if we were to tear down that barn. So, it's going nowhere until we have another barn built. And it may not be seven years. It may be 10 years. It may be 15 years, you know. Until we have a plan, it's staying.
I think Mr. Myers said it probably best. He said, we were talking about this, and he probably had had enough for his last meeting, most likely. And he said, he goes, guys, it's a master plan. You can adjust this thing as it goes along. You know, if a barn ends up staying there and it becomes a barn again, that's fine. So...
It'd be great if they could do that.
Yeah. I hope Don's been waiting. Vice Chair Maselli.
Okay. Hello.
Hi.
So, just a couple of thoughts, sort of along the vein that you guys are talking about. Just make sure that town staff stays on top of this, too, just in case there's an organization in town, or even an Eagle Scout who needs a project, who can maybe tackle some of these things for you, because I know none of us would be surprised at the organizations that we have and the volunteerism that's inherent within them is really amazing. The second thing is, and I just let Chris know about this today, is that I noticed that the Farm Heritage Committee was not listed as a committee on the website, and Kathy Larkin was nice enough today to add you guys. So, I know you have a lot on your plate, but nonetheless, you might want to think about listing your sites and the various points of interest involved with your sites on the town website so that people can offer ideas, get involved, whatever it may be. So, sort of similar to what Open Space does, where we list all of our properties and, you know, the values and the resources. Want me to do it?
No. Actually, what you said, you know, your timing is perfect, because when we were doing the stand, we had a gentleman stop down, and he says, hey, listen, I raise bees. Remember, I was telling the chairman about this, and...
Roger Dietz?
I don't know. I had a bunch of folks. But, I mean, that corner is like crazy, the amount of people that go by that corner. I mean, that stand is like, would be awesome for a nonprofit. So, we're working up regulations now, rules and regulations. I know Mr. Show to be happy to hear that as opposed to something else. So, anyways, we're working on that, and the beekeeper was saying that, you know, jeez, I've been looking for places to sell my honey, you know, and they're farmers. So, it's just great. I mean, it's been, so, yeah, we're going to have to put something out there. So, that's, your timing is impeccable.
Perfect. Just to complement that, too, some other things we talked about. Mike, I think this goes, you'll be pleased with this, too, goes to your point. We're talking about maybe running that stand out to the Boy Scouts next year, when they're selling Christmas trees right from that stand. Maybe Leaf is selling things. School gardens can sell things from that stand, honey from the stand. So, we want to really make that...
Suddington Land Trust.
Exactly.
We really want to make it a community farm stand as well, right, in the historical area, right? Just two other quick things that are on for action tonight. Ed mentioned John Myers has, we miss him already, but he has moved on from the YMCA. So, with that, I'm pleased to say, and it is on for action, we'll be looking to recommend Mark Poehler to take John Myers' spot on the Farm Heritage Committee, as the connection with the YMCA has been invaluable, too. So, hopefully, we'll look for action for that tonight. And then, did you want to talk a little bit about the greenhouse?
I don't want to take it away from Mr. Show, but we're still continually doing improvements down at Leaf, looking to have a greenhouse that's active during the wintertime. Mark's pretty creative down there with that. So, we're trying to make, you know, make that Leaf program, any option they can to make money. We're trying to do it. But I'll let Mr. Show to talk about that during his report.
That's under his report. Okay, great.
Do much better than me.
Any other questions for Farm Heritage before we move on?
We had manure, but I understand Mr. Zoni's coming on for the sewer committee.
Thank you, Mr. Pocock.
Transition.
Excellent transition. Yes, we'll go to the sewer committee to get rid of that manure. Mr. Zoni?
I have to apologize. I don't have any nostalgic barn stories of my childhood to tell you. But I will tell you, my neighborhood kids played in the old sewer that was abandoned on South Main Street. So, I guess this chairmanship's working out pretty well.
Excellent.
Anyway, there's two things on your agenda tonight for action. One of them, we took action on at our last meeting, and I had reported to you on the fuel cell issue. That's on for your final action tonight to move forward with that project. That project is a no-cost project to the town. It's going to save us 1.2 cents per kilowatt on our electric generation, for a total of about $62,000 a year at the treatment plant in electrical savings. And in the course of the contract, over the 20-year period, we'll save about $1.2 million. So, it's really a project that we encourage that you go forward on to utilize that savings. And it's a good backup generation system as well for the treatment plant. I mean, obviously, we don't want that to ever fail. And if we had an electrical failure, and somehow we couldn't get fuel for our generators, this fuel cell would continue to generate power for the system. So, and we're hoping you move forward on that. The other item on for action is...
Questions on that. Our energy consultant, Adam, is in the audience. You all know Adam.
If you have any questions on how this works, the savings and all of that. Adam is here from Titan.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just come up and talk about it now.
I said, just save us money. That easy.
Did you hear her coming with, just save us money? We like that.
Yeah. So, as just a general status update, as far as the process goes right now, Dusan Fuel Cell, they applied for the incentive. They were awarded it. The down payment on that is due in the 20 seconds. So, Carolyn and I are working now on the power purchase agreement terms, make sure that, you know, we're kind of all working to the same endpoint. So far, so good. I expect we could have a turnaround on that document probably sometime this week. But I'll just make one clarification. It's actually 1.5 cents savings. So, yeah, yeah. So, for whatever that may be worth.
Doesn't change his numbers, though, because the numbers you have are based on 1.5.
Right. But, so that's, I mean, it's pretty much everything you said is spot-on. You know, we brought this project to consideration for the town, because it's fairly unique what the fuel cell manufacturer is willing to do. I mean, they're actually willing to pay for the natural gas associated with fueling it, which is something pretty uncommon. I have not seen another company willing to do that. And then, having a fixed discount on the price of power is also pretty interesting as well. I think it'll ensure, over time, that you get the value from it that you were anticipating. So, we're very much at the tail end of the process. Anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
I would just add one thing before you ask any questions, Mr. Chairman. Your motion tonight, just for, give us a little bit of protection, is that your motion tonight would be to approve the PPA with the stipulation that the final approval from the town attorney and the town manager's office, because I want to see the final. I've already talked to everyone, and I'm comfortable with the language they're doing, but I'd like to see the final one before we sign off on it. So, the motion, because obviously, time is of the essence. They have to give $30,000 to the state next week. With all that said, if you do wish to move forward with it, please put a stipulation on it that the...
The final sign-off will come from the manager's office.
The town attorney and manager, yes.
Okay. Yes. Councilman Berry, and then...
Sure. Adam, thank you very much. Former state rep, Dave Zoni, thank you very much for all your work. Actually, when I got this document, it's pretty detailed. It's a lot to it. So, I spoke with Councilwoman Kelly Morrissey, who really went over with a fine tooth comb. And I want to appreciate, I want to publicly thank her for her insight that she had given to me about the document that's before us. She has some experience through her employer and things like that, just what they're doing. And I just want to thank Kelly for just giving me some insight into the document. So, thank you all very much.
Sure.
Councilman LaVie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chair Zoni, for your presentation. I have a question for either Adam or Mr. Zoni. What was the reaction of the sewer committee with a 1.5 cent reduction from the utility rate versus other PPAs come with a fixed rate? So, if the utility rate increases, the town would actually save more. We're actually going to save less over time if the price goes up as a percentage. So, I mean, is this, I mean, it might be that this company doesn't even offer that type of power purchase agreement. So, can you touch upon that? That's my first question. Number two is the $30,000 down payment. Who pays that? Because this is no...
Dusan.
Okay. Yeah, because it's no cost to the town. We're going to start saving money as soon as the install goes on. So, we can't lose. But I was interested in the PPA structure on this one versus other PPAs that I've read.
Sure. So, yeah. So, typically, I'm sure the town's familiar with the solar PPAs that are in place. It's a fixed price. So, in theory, you could lose money as well. There's nothing necessarily...
Higher risk, higher reward.
Yeah. There's nothing necessarily preventing you. Again, it would be a far-fetched scenario because those PPAs are written at a pretty low price. But that's really the fundamental trade-off. And I think it's a good hedge, maybe not to have all of your power purchase agreements pegged to a fixed price. In this case, Dusan's value proposition in this PPA that they have been offering, you know, I've asked them on a few occasions if it's something that they would look at a fixed price. And my experience working with them is that they are incredibly rigid in their, in how they structure the agreements, and when they come out with a product, if you will, just by virtue of the way the company's run, they're not really inclined to tinker with the nuts and bolts of the PPA. You know, that said, I get what you're saying, as a percentage, or, you know, if the utility prices increase, the net dollar savings doesn't increase or fall. So, you're really kind of pegging yourself to a specific number of dollar savings per year, regardless of what the market does.
One final question. I know a few years back, there were some concerns over going out to bid for these type of things. I assume that didn't happen here. I'm okay with that. I want to make sure that the rest of the councils are also aware of that.
Sure. And I can tell you a little bit just about the process and why this might be a little bit different than, say, a solar project in town, where you could realistically put out an RFP and get six or seven qualified companies to put a...
Adam, didn't we have an RFP on this one? I thought we did an RFP for this, didn't we?
There was no RFP, per se. I think part of what's interesting about Dusan and the fuel cells in general is...
You solicited, I remember, because it was more than one company that was, that you talked about, so...
And that was, there's a company, Fuel Cell Energy. And the problem with their equipment is that the smallest size is 1.4 megawatts.
That was it. Okay. No one else could do this size.
Which is dramatically oversized as far as what's appropriate for the plant. So, and even Dusan's 460 KW, which is their smallest, is still a little bit big for the plant, but they're willing to write the PPA in accordance with what the plant needs. So, it's different in the sense that there really was, there wasn't a qualified laundry list of companies that could satisfy the needs for the wastewater treatment plant in the same way that Dusan could.
Right. All right.
Thank you. I trust the sewer committee. So, thank you for your work and the sewer committee's work.
Sure.
Mark, do you have anything to add about the contract, or you're happy with it?
No. Like I said, I, looking at it from the manager's standpoint, my concern was two things, making sure that we absolutely could never lose money. And the second thing is, is that I was actually okay with doing different contracts, because I do have a lot of eggs in the solar basket. And by the way, I sent your report to the council and the Board of Finance. Thank you very much for the solar report. You all saw it. It's exceeding expectations, our solar program. So, thank you for that. So, I was okay with this, Tom, because it's a little bit of a different structure, and I'd like to have contracts that, all no-lose contracts, no-town-cost contracts, but definitely would be able to hedge the market. So, that's why I liked it this way.
And the reason, just one last thing I would add on the contract style, I think Dusan, since they're willing to cover the cost of the gas for the unit, they're basically making a bet that, and it's true historically, that as gas prices increase, electricity prices tend to follow suit over time. So, I think their assessment is that if gas prices increase, AKA, their operating costs increase, they can collect more revenue, even though that your contracts are pegged to a third party, not the utility. So, I think it's a unique model, and the way that they justify it to themselves and their investors is by being able to have that variability in what they charge you, even though the amount of that discount stays fixed over time. So, that's my read. If I had to get inside of their head and how they are thinking about these projects, that would be it.
One more point of clarification. I know that, I'm not sure if it was covered at the sewer committee, there are two meters, correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, you know better than I. There's two meters at Water Pusher Control. One, which is the everything that, except for, I believe, the nitrogen plants on its own meter. Is that correct? So, they're capable of tying into one meter. So, obviously, part of the agreement is, we want them to tie into the big meter to save us the most amount of money. And I assume that's already been agreed upon with the company.
That's the meter that they would tie into. The other one would just frankly be too small.
Yeah, okay.
And we've already worked with tie and bond a little bit to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't be stepping on anybody's toes as far as if this project moves forward. So, they're aware of the project. Trying to think if there's any other relevant details might be interesting. You know, we could have some flexibility as to when the project is actually constructed. In the very best-case scenario, you're looking at probably 12 months. Worst-case, 24. And there's some variability based on the scheduling of what tie and bond is doing. So, we can tailor that end of it to Suddington's needs.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. The last thing is the contract with tie and bond for engineering services regarding the decommissioning of the Blatchley Pump Station. As you know, we're switching over from a pump station to a gravity feed to accommodate that neighborhood. And we'll no longer have a need for the pump station there. So, it has to be decommissioned, and that requires some engineering services, not to exceed $74,900, which was the contract value. The staff assures me, the engineering staff assures me, that they'll be watching that contract every step of the way to try to minimize those costs.
Vice Chair Maselli.
Well, I just want to go on the record as stating that because I'm the chair of the Open Space Committee, and this is going to have a little bit of an impact on our open space parcel, I had asked if I could run this by the Open Space Committee. We don't meet for several weeks. So, then I was asked by staff, well, what's your concern? And I said, I just don't want the denigration of trees out there. So, what I was told was that the boring contractor is, not that he's boring, but he's boring holes, is not allowed to disturb any trees on our open space parcel with regard to this project. So, I just want to put that on the record, that that's what was asked, and that's what I was told could happen.
That's correct. Regarding the borings, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave, for the sewer committee?
No, but I would, I have one more thing for Dawn. I think that probably will need to be reviewed. Once the borings are done and the project actually moves forward, we'll have to have a further discussion about what actually needs to happen on the property for the implementation of that gravity line.
There will be a pipeline. There will be manholes. The pipeline will have to be serviced. The pipeline cannot be impeded by tree roots or anything like that that could damage the pipeline. So, in the future, after the borings are done and the project's approved, there will be a right-of-way that will just contain this pipe underground.
That's correct. And...
So, this information was not forthcoming in my emails with staff? So, this is...
I'm not sure what question you were asked. But if you're talking about the borings, that's one thing. But I'm not on the sewer committee, but I can tell you, when you put a pipe through an area, not only do the trees, assuming there's trees there, not only the trees have to be removed, but there's also a buffer area where you can't have trees, because you can't have the tree roots growing in. So, obviously, David, on behalf of the sewer committee, just keep the open space... So, obviously, David, on behalf of the sewer committee, just keep the Open Space Committee apprised, but I'd be shocked if you can do this without cutting trees down.
I think what's the plan...
This is why I had said I wanted to discuss this with the Open Space Committee. I mean, and then some, and then I was asked by staff, "Well, you know, rather than wait the couple of weeks till the committee meets, is it okay if we just do this?" So, see, this is why I don't like to rush with things and, you know, there is a committee that this needs to go before.
Dawn, I think we still have time. And I believe in our last meeting, Keith did say that he was going to talk to the Open Space Committee and make sure that everyone had a clear understanding of what needed to happen for the project and why it needed to happen and what that would actually look like.
So, that hasn't transpired yet. I just want to, in front of staff, that hasn't transpired yet...
I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you're doing this for the design aspect of it, for the decommissioning, but work is not planned on starting on this for at least the next fiscal year.
That's right. That's correct. There'll be further discussions with Open Space regarding what the final project will look like. This contract is specific to the decommissioning of the structure that's there. Apparently, there's PCBs and other, maybe VOCs that I'm not aware of, but this company, Ty &amp; Bond, they come in, they evaluate the whole thing. They give us a plan to demo the thing, how much dirt we're going to have to haul away, you know, that whole thing.
I'll be honest, this all stems from, I think it was my very first year on this council. And it's funny, it's too bad Mr. Polcock wasn't here because it was under his leadership and I, Panthorn Park, we did something similar at Panthorn Park, and the trees, do you remember this, Mark?
Yes.
The trees were just wiped out. And no one knew about it. And you went, you know, I went for a walk the next day and it's like, "Oh, my God, what happened to the site?" And then we started getting a plethora of calls from residents and whatnot saying, "Oh, my God, they just clear-cut these 100-year-old trees at Panthorn Park." And I mentioned Ed because our engineer at the time, he and I went back and forth on this a little bit, and then Ed squashed the back and forth. And it was just upsetting. So, that's, you know, an experience from the, from a decade ago. I don't want to see that happen again.
I'm sure that...
There wasn't proper planning, authority.
All right. So, if I can ask the town manager, what is the timeframe on this? Do we need to approve this tonight?
Well, you want to approve it tonight because we have to plan the decommissioning of it, but the Blatchley Station isn't ready until next fiscal year.
Yes.
Because that's in your, that's in the capital plan for next fiscal year.
Okay. So, approving the conceptual plan tonight is not going to...
It's not a conception, you're not approving anything except for, they're going to design the decommissioning of the station.
That's what I mean, decommissioning, but that's not going to...
It's not going to do what we're talking about. Eventually, what's going to have to come to you is, it's going to have to come to you an approval and funding for the, instead of redoing the pump station, we're going to do a gravity line. So, we have, in the capital budget, there's probably $900,000 for the Blatchley Pump Station, which is not going to be used. A number will be used, but it'll be probably less than that, to put a gravity line in. All that's got to be put in front of you. This is simply to get a contract together for the decommissioning. So, it's going to be discussed, but I don't want, I don't want to sit here, I don't want to sit here and say that I'm going to come back to you without any kind of disturbance of property because if you're going to put a line in, there's going to be some disturbance, not only on private property, but on town property. So, I'm not going to sit here and tell you there's not going to be. What I am going to say is that, obviously, as this time goes on, those of you on the sewer committee will work very closely with the people who are designing this, which is probably going to be T&amp;B, right?
Yep.
So, they're designing it. So, you'll have the minimal impact as possible, but you're talking about something that's very beneficial, removing a pump station. That is something that's outrageously beneficial for the town of Suddington and putting in a gravity line. So, I would not be surprised if there will be some effect, but it's important that everyone understands what that effect is as we move forward.
Mark, I just want to say one, I'm sorry I jumped in front of you. I'm sorry, Michael. But I'm kind of hot right now. But I just want to say one thing, and that's that, what Dawn is saying, she's speaking for many of us on the council, we want to save as many trees as we possibly can. And we want the disturbance of the property to be minimal. And I am not, I don't want to see that clear-cut. I don't want to see those trees down, taken down indiscriminately. I want to have, I want to see what they're going to do, and then I want to approve that. On this council level, Dawn is not speaking just for herself in that. And so, there are many of us sitting here right now who agree with her and stand strong on that. So, we understand the importance of it. I understand the importance of it. But I also understand maintaining the integrity of that property.
It's no different than any other sewer project. It must come to this board. You're the sewer authority. Not only that, you're also the financial authority. The project that Dawn was talking about, for better, for worse, also came in front of here. It just probably was not explained correctly and people didn't understand it. But all these things have to come to the council. All the maps are approved by not only this board, but planning and zoning. So, that all has to happen. We're asking for someone to put plans together for decommissioning, which is the first step in putting in a gravity system. So, that's what we're talking about. All the other stuff has to take place, but I don't want to leave here tonight thinking that somehow we're going to put a miracle together and I can put, I, we can put a underground sewer through an open space area and private property without disturbance. That's going to happen. I don't know what the extent is. I'm not an engineer, but there will be disturbance.
Talking about mitigation.
What you're voting on tonight is simply engineering costs. It's a contract for engineering. That's all it is.
All right. Councilman Ricchio?
Jeez, Vic, I wish you'd let me speak first.
I'm sorry.
I think, I think for, Mark's trying to be nice about it, I can see it. To put a sewer line through the woods, there's going to be a lot of trees coming down, folks. I mean, let's, but, let's put the positive spin on it. So, why don't you get the open space involved? We heard, not recently, a couple of years ago, a lot of talk about meadows. Let the open space committee chime in on the whole thing and design the, you know, you got to replant the whole thing. Plant it, let them do the research on it, and plant, make the place a beautiful meadow, and everyone wins.
Okay. That's very possible, but like I said, let's let the designers do the design and we'll get input from everybody on it.
When that time comes, I'm sure that we could arrange a walkthrough between the engineering department, the sewer committee, and the open space committee, just to see what will actually happen there. I mean, I don't even know how many trees are in the path of this. I haven't walked the land. But I know that the town is preparing easements with the residents that they have to go through private property. Those are in the works. And of course, they didn't do this years ago because the folks that owned the property didn't want it disturbed. They had hopes of building houses there.
Right.
And didn't want, they didn't want to give up the easements, so.
Councilwoman Morrissey?
So, I just, for the sewer committee, we have all this, we have discussed not cutting down trees. And we have no intention of just willy-nilly cutting anything down. Mr. Hayden is well-aware of, being cognizant of only cutting what he needs to and must, and will do his due diligence, I am sure, to make sure that we are doing as little...
And you're there to make sure he does.
And I will be there, absolutely marking trees myself. Thank you so much.
I'm also confident that Mr. Zoni and Mrs. Selly will talk frequent about this project.
They don't like each other.
They don't. Right. So, I'm sure they will talk frequently about this project, Mr. Zoni and Mrs. Selly, to ensure there's that line of communication.
Again, this all came to me via email. I just want to state it one more time. No, I'm just reminding the town manager. I mean, this all came to me via email, and there seemed to be a sense of urgency.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Any other questions for the sewer committee? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zoni.
Thank you.
So, we have another former councilwoman that's coming back to give a report. Former councilwoman Stephanie Yurillo is now the new chair of the Regional Health District. So, Stephanie Yurillo will give the report.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Our health district is expanding. We recently included Middlefield in the way, manner of regionalization. And this past December's meeting, which was December 13th, was the first time it included the first selectman of Middlefield, Mr. Ed Bailey. So, we welcomed him with open arms to our board. Mr. Lockwood, the director of health, gave a synopsis on our finances, which are really in good stead. He also was saying that the sanitarians are getting their job done. They, at that time, last month, they were minus one because one staff was on maternity leave. And there's a lot of establishments opening in Suddington that really need inspections from the sanitarians. She's back now, but, so they're at full force and they're still going on strong. The state of Connecticut is adopting the FDA food code, but the state of Connecticut is behind in this. The sanitarians are undergoing training so that they're up to par when they do the inspections for the establishments that require it. But they still have to go on Connecticut standards and not FDA standards, but they're being trained in FDA standards for the time that it comes to pass that Connecticut will be on par nationally. There were some flu clinics that were held, both in Plainville and in Suddington. The number of people going to these clinics is low because people are getting them, they're just going into the drugstores and other establishments, their own physicians, and getting flu shots. I just inquired today because this, with the new governor, about the state commissioner of health, who has been Raul Pino. We've been fortunate with that because Mr. Pino, or Dr. Pino, excuse me, is a classmate of Mr. Lockwood. Well, when I inquired today, there is still no replacement. So, I don't have any updates on that. Our next meeting is not until March, but I want to put in a plug because February is Children's Dental Health Month. So, everybody be cognizant of that. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for the Regional Health District?
Do have one thing to add.
Sure.
Just for the public's awareness, we did bring Middlefield on to our Regional Health District with Plainville. There's no additional cost to bringing Middlefield on. It just brings additional revenue. And then, and they are such a small community that the additional work that needs to be done is being done without additional headcount. So, it's a win-win for everybody.
That's great. Good. Any other questions for Health District? Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Next committee is Committee of Chairs. We had five items, but I'll be brief. The first item, we continued conversations related to the opening statement that we made and the partnership between the...
Chris Selfinsure.
No, just finish. Then give it to me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. So, the first item was related to the joint statement, which, again, we heard, talk about that earlier in the, in our meeting. Second, we talked about the 1920 budget review. There are workshops that the Board of Finance has been holding. They're trying to be proactive with the budget rather than reactive, looking at the grant list growth, state contributions, and seeing if the town can estimate a little bit more moving forward. So, but tonight was another excellent overview of the 1920 budget process. Board of Finance budget policy, that was, we talked a little bit about that, and that relates also to the self-insurance new policy that this council adopted at our last meeting. So, I think that'll be an asset for us moving forward, having everything come back to the council level. We next talked about the medical marijuana update. There is a subcommittee from Planning and Zoning. They're talking about changing the regulations to add in their language about the proximity to schools, homes, and it will be discussed again tomorrow night at the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. And the final item we discussed was also through Planning and Zoning, the signage update. Years ago, they went through the regulations for signage in town, so they're doing that again. They met right before Christmas. And again, that's anticipated to be discussed tomorrow night as well. So, we got a little update on that. Any questions on the Committee of the Chairs? Okay. We plan to not meet in February. We'll resume the Committee of the Chairs again in March. So, we will not have a February meeting. Okay. So, I'm sorry. And now, we'll go backwards a little bit to self-insurance. My apologies.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just reporting the self-insurance committee report. Councilman Poole is, who's vice chairman of the self-insurance committee, is not here, so I'm just giving the report in his absence. The committee did meet on December 17th and January 9th. We did review the budget numbers for the month of November at our December meeting. November did see extensive claims and fees that were over budget. However, when you combine the numbers for our December numbers, we are still under budget on claims through the end of December. So, that's good news, but we do have six more months to go, so the committee is keeping an eye on that. One of the big issues that the committee wrestled with was the determining the level of funding for the 2019-2020 budget. Through anticipated claims, costs that insurance might go up, other issues that the committee has to review, the committee's recommendation for the upcoming budget year was an increase of 7.4% approximately, which would bring the budget for 2020 to $24,900,000. That is a substantial increase, and it's something that we're going to review as we get more information on claims before we actually adopt the final budget. But right now, that does appear to be the number that will be used in calculations of the upcoming budget. So, that's going from 23.2 to approximately, to 24.9. The committee is also reviewing and will interview proposals for health providers for the upcoming year. The committee is making sure that all proposals will be carefully elevated, you know, the proposals will be carefully reviewed. The committee will conduct formal interviews, and this is a very big decision, something the committee hasn't done in recent times. So, we are looking at that. They will be one-on-one interviews with the committee. We're going to get a real idea of what these companies will provide in terms of health insurance for, for the, what their proposals are for the, for the town of Suddington. So, we anticipate, the committee will anticipate a recommendation in late February. And I don't know if Mr. Lombardi has anything he wants to add. He's also a member of the committee.
Yeah. I think, I think the month that you read off, Councilwoman Berry, might be, I think at the December meeting, we reviewed the October results and then, and then the January...
Actually, that's a good point. I'm sorry, you're correct. So, it was October, well, actually, I'm looking at the minutes from December 17th. It says, reported the total claims and fees came in approximately $671,000 over budget for November. So, I'm sure, not sure if they had final numbers when you guys met on January 9th that we, that we're anticipating the December. And those are, just I talked to Chris Poole, and he had given me some information.
And I just want to elaborate on the self-insurance expense for the town. We are self-funded. So, even though, you know, I agree with what Councilman Berry said, the number that we initially looked at was very high. It's like, wow, huge increase. We had a significant claim come through in October, which hit our stop-loss, which impacted our, the actuaries' estimates for next year. So, and I think last year, Councilman Berry and I were both a little bit frustrated, I think is a good word, that we didn't go out to bid for our health insurance. So, January 30th, it's probably going to be a very long meeting for the self-insurance committee, but, you know, I don't think there's, I think that we, as a council, don't need to panic just yet. We'll give it another month or two, and then we'll revisit it. It is a big undertaking by town staff and by our insurance consultant, but it is definitely a good thing that we are doing this. So, thank you, Councilman Berry, for the report.
Okay. Any other questions for self-insurance? Okay. Moving on, next we have Public Works.
Okay. The Public Works Committee met on January 3rd. We had a very in-depth presentation by Weston and Sampson, which provided some preliminary design plans for the Plansville Safety Improvements, which we received a state grant for. So, the committee took a lot of information in, and I do encourage any members from the public that would like to attend the Public Works Committee, they can be very interesting. We talk about a lot of different issues. So, the first issue is the Plansville Safety Improvement Plan, which we did receive a good informative presentation by Weston and Sampson. We anticipate the tentative schedule for this project is that we hope to have 90% of the plans completed by May of this year. Final plans are anticipated to be in July of this year. We hope, if everything goes on schedule, that we would look to advertise the project next fall of 2019 and a construction completion date of November of 2020. So, this is a very in-depth plan. One of the issues that was very important for members of the committee, and I do want to highlight Mrs. Misselli, Councilwoman Misselley's, is our community outreach to the business owners in Plansville. It's very important for us to get their insight, their input, to determine what they think the best way to move would be for these safety improvements. So, there's still a lot of work to do. The committee's on top of it, and we're really excited about those plans, which will continue to get closer and closer to final plans, hopefully by the end of this year, the summer of this year. We had extensive information from the police chief, who is a member of the committee. We talked about accidents at certain intersections. We talked about the importance of keeping the rails to trails safe for our pedestrians, and very grateful and appreciative of the Police Department and Chief Daly for all the work they're doing on that. We also are still looking for a project to be scheduled and be completed in 2019, and that would be the Jude Lane and West Street intersection upgrade. That is a project that the committee has worked very diligently on, and we're excited that that looks like it's moving forward. We also talked about additional projects that are still in the planning stages. So, there's always new projects that the committee is looking at, and we are moving out forward over two years. So, there's a lot going on. I want to thank the Water Department for their input. They are anticipating, and this is very important for the people of Sutherlandton to realize, is they are doing a water main replacement in downtown Plansville. So, that is something that is being coordinated with town staff, with the engineering, with the Police Department. It's a very important project for the Water Department to upgrade all the water mains in downtown Plansville, so we will have more information as we go through this year. And lastly, but not least, I do want to acknowledge our Town Clerk, Kathy Larkin, who's going to give some information about bulky waste and the permit process, because we go through that every year, and your office handles all those permits. So, Kathy, if you want to just highlight that, it'd be great.
Sure. The 2019 stickers are now available, so you can renew those in person or by mail. There's an application on the website under the Town Clerk's page. You can fill out and mail it in, and we'll mail you your sticker. The 2018, if you have that, that's still valid until March 31st of this year. And just a reminder, for those getting a sticker for a new vehicle, new registration, we would need to see that registration for that new sticker.
Great. Thank you, Kathy.
I just have to ask, we were pink for 2018. What color are we this year?
Periwinkle.
Ah, periwinkle.
What color is periwinkle?
I don't even know.
Blue.
Blue, okay.
Similar to your tie.
Thank you. Now, I know it's a periwinkle tie.
Okay. Any questions for Public Works? Okay. And finally, our final committee report tonight. Sutherlandton High School Roof Committee, which is Vicki and myself. Do you want to, do you want me to give it over to you? Okay. I'll be very brief. We've, Vicki and I had several meetings related to the Sutherlandton High School Roof Building Committee. Essentially, we interviewed the architects now. If you remember, we had already hired the construction manager. So, we interviewed the architects, and our recommendation tonight is to award, the Town Council to award Hibbert and Rosa Architects LLC of Middletown in the amount of $14,000 with reimbursable expenses of $2,000. Mr. Romano did get three favorable recommendations for the firm, so we're very comfortable recommending them. The construction manager, Roger LaFleur, has worked with them before and feels very comfortable recommending them for the project. They also were $2,000 under budget in relation to the other firm that bid, so we're very confident with that recommendation. Any questions on that? That is on the agenda for action tonight. So, finally, with that, wow, 9 o'clock, and we're just to Town Managers Report. It is, but we were really early, the last meeting in December, so. Town Managers Report, Mr. Shota.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two Board of Finance meetings since the last time we met. Both of them were relatively short, no effect on the budgets. The appropriations we had were appropriations for money that was received from grants or other sources, and the minor transfers were put in from the department heads. That was on the meeting of the 12th. There was a substantial vote on the meeting of the 9th. As you know, we received a grant, as Mr. Berry explained, for $2.5 million for the safety program in Plansville. As part of the process, we take that funding, we have to establish a capital line, so that we can now draw off that capital line. So, the Board of Finance approved that, and we're hoping by approving the minutes from this board, we could then establish that line and start paying the bills as they start coming in. No other major issues at the 9th meeting. Any questions on the two Board of Finance meetings?
If not, Mr. Polcock touched on this, the LEAF project, which you're all very familiar with. We have a budget, which we've been expending to improve and maintain the buildings over at the LEAF site. As Mr. Polcock said, there's a cold storage building, we just put a roof on. This is a project which is necessary for the LEAF organization to grow during the off-season, which is a greenhouse. Mr. Hayden went out to get three quotes. As you're probably aware, there aren't a lot of companies that actually deliver greenhouses, but he did happen to find three of them. This is actually for the materials. The materials actually delivered on-site. Mark and his staff will be the ones establishing it. They'll be building it. With it comes a furnace and everything necessary, and I explained to Mark what was happening, and I said, "Is this something that's difficult?" And he says, "Look around you." There was five or six other ones. He said, "Who do you think built all these?" So, anyway, I'll leave that up to his capable hands to do that, but we are recommending Griffin Greenhouses and Nurseries of Stafford Springs, Connecticut for $31,650. Any questions on that?
Just two things to add to that. This did go before the Farm Heritage Committee, and we did approve it pending three quotes and not, the price not to exceed, so the Farm Heritage Committee already approved this. The other thing that's important to note is, this is contingent for us, the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain, as many of us are probably aware, they like to have matching grants, so this shows us an investment in the future. This should give Mark Ramsey some off-season growing time, which should increase his revenue. Therefore, that's how we received the matching grant from the Greater Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. So, I think that's important to add to.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Thank you. So, where does this money come from?
This is out of the, if you remember, the, we have a capital account, and it rolled over from, we didn't, it wasn't like an annual budget item. We had, we still have money in the capital account. We allocated $250,000, I want to say, Mike can probably tell you, three years ago. So, this is...
Capital account of Farm Heritage.
Farm Heritage.
Not the capital improvement account.
Correct. It's specific, it's specific. We allocated at the time, you may remember, $150 operational funds. That's been expended completely, and then $250,000 in capital improvements. And that's where we spent the money for the roof as well. And the master plans, that's where we got the funds for that as well. Okay? So, that's where that would come from. Any other questions about that?
That completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Town Attorney's Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be asking for an 824 referral regarding a minor land swap off of West Street between town-owned land and some privately-owned land. Just to review what an 824 referral is, 824 refers to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes Regarding Municipal Improvements. That requires the Town Council to refer a matter to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report back prior to taking action involving certain items under which this falls into that category, because the town would be acquiring land. So, I'll ask Mr. Judas to come up and talk to us about that request.
Okay. Thank you for being here, and I apologize that it's so long in the meeting, but thank you for your patience.
This is early for Planning and Zoning.
Planning and zoning was tough. I don't know.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Stephen Judas with the Office of Harry Colson. I do have a PDF of the map. Has everyone seen the map? Should I put it?
Yes, it was in your package.
The small version in your package.
So, you do have a copy of it, then. I'm here tonight asking for a request to do a small transfer of land between property of the estate of Barbara Jagowski and the town Sutherlandton Open Space that was deeded to the town as part of a subdivision for Westwood Road. I'm here tonight with Barbara's daughter, Gail, and husband, Mark Wakelin. Barbara's estate owns an acre piece of property off of Westwood Drive, and right now, it's landlocked. We're proposing to do a little swap of land, a 50-foot wide, 60-foot wide strip, approximately 15 to 20 feet wide, and then transfer land from Barbara to that open space parcel. The open space parcel is not an ideal open space parcel. It has a power line and a detention basin on it, so it's not the open space that I think you think of typically when we talk about town-owned open spaces. It's something that was deeded before a lot of the new initiatives of open space were started. Our swap is very small. The land became landlocked. Barbara was a very generous person in nature. Originally, she had deeded this land off to a nonprofit prayer group. At some point, she realized that that group was not, misrepresented themselves, and she actually had to go back to court and just did eventually regain ownership of the property. It was a very long battle for her and very difficult, and Barbara was a client of mine and a friend for a very long time, and I felt that this is something that I'm trying to help her daughter wrap up the estate. So, if you have any questions about this, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Are there any questions? Yep. Councilwoman Morrissey.
Are there plans of what is going to go on the land once you have the land swapped?
We would propose an open space subdivision. We're proposing, I believe, six to seven building lots is what we, we haven't actually started plans yet, but we took a conceptual look at it from that perspective.
Any other questions? No. Okay. And you're on for action, hopefully shortly.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time and consideration tonight.
Just one other quick matter. I'll try to be quick. It's a lot of moving parts with it, but the Town Council was subject to a Freedom of Information appeal that was filed by the Sutherlandton Observer back in October. That matter was noticed for a hearing on January 4th. On January 2nd, it was withdrawn by the appellant. Thereafter, there was an editorial in the Observer. I just want to quickly quote what it said, so that you understand what I'm talking about. And just to go back a little bit more, this related to a resolution the council passed back at the end of August relating to Bradley Hospital. And there was allegations that council members were holding illegal meetings with Hartford Healthcare representatives. So, that was the subject of the appeal. This was the quote from the Observer, which caught my attention. "Our hands are tied as far as having a hearing and letting the town know that they had illegal meetings, an FOI Commission official finally ruled in an email last Friday." This is dated January 5th, so this goes back a little bit. "I will contact them and let them know that those were illegal meetings going forward. They must let the public know." I was not privy to that conversation between the Sutherlandton Observer and the FOI Commission representative, so I don't know if that's an exact quote. And the fact that there was never an actual hearing held means there could be no ruling. And therefore, I thought it a little strange that somebody was saying that the council engaged in illegal meetings if there was no findings and no hearing. So, I did write a letter to the Executive Director of the Freedom of Information Commission, asking them to look into the file and report back on exactly what those communications were.
Well, thank you for advocating for us.
Just for clarification for moving forward, because we've all been through FOI stuff. If a member of the Town Council chooses to meet with a member of the public, whether it's a resident or a business owner, do we or do we not have every right to do that?
I would say you would. And that was my concern with addressing this immediately, because you certainly don't want to have a chilling effect with council members communicating with the public.
Well, I read the same thing in the Observer, which I hardly ever read. I just think I was using it for fire starter, but shame on them for putting that out to the general public to think that council members are up here having, I mean, several of us aren't, we're well aware of what level constitute a meeting. And I know, I met with Bradley Hospital, happy to admit it, in my office by myself. I know other people up here met with them, whether it was one or two, and I don't think it was ever any more than two. So, just so the public is aware, don't believe everything you read in the paper.
Just to add to that, too, it was at their request, not the council's request. They initiated all these meetings, and the council did not.
And they should. They're a business, well, I think they have entities that pay taxes in Sutherlandton, but they're a business in Sutherlandton. They have every right to contact us, and they should, as should anybody else.
Absolutely.
It's part of our mandate to meet with people, and I mean, we're the, I've said this often, we're the last line of defense for our residents and even businesses to come to us and say, "I'm having a problem here." And so, we meet with people all the time, and I was appalled when I heard that, actually.
So, if I can ask the Town Attorney, if you could keep the full council aware, you know, I understand it may be some time before you hear anything from the FOI Commissioner, but it is a little troubling to hear there's a statement one-sided, and it may not be, I don't know, but I'm sure you'll get your answer once you hear back from someone in the commission.
I hope so, and I'll certainly report back at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. So, I assume that concludes the Town Attorney's Report.
Sure does.
Okay. Thank you. So, moving on, we are at Public Communications, so the microphone is open to any resident that would like to speak. We would ask you to limit your comments to five minutes, and please begin by stating your name and address for our record. The microphone is open. Good evening.
Good evening, Elio.
[unintelligible] I figure this, because. First, I want to compliment Mr. Troyana. I remember when she was a cherry woman, she said she was a locanto, and I thank you. So, finally, came that couple of months ago, suggest here to go see a ton of [unintelligible]. At the end, when she left, I said, "If you don't understand what I'm talking about, I will repeat." And I remember the time when she left, before she left, I said, "I have my grandfather working in Canada, 10 years as an immigrant." When we went back in Italy, he bought property, [unintelligible] to another town, and before you know, after a few years, the town, the property was not here anymore. It was a transfer to somebody into working with the town. But my mom, she never really explained to me. She didn't even know. But through this years, anyway, I am really disappointed, Councilman Riccio, to contest my ability to express myself. This is not because I'm not expressing myself for years, it's because of the people in this council, it's with the council, the council, you know, the little people outside. And I want to keep, I think we are keeping it. Now, I have here, it was April 2016, one of the manager made a memorandum, which all was a false. Then, back to Lily, the lady lawyer, town lawyer, I explained everything. I think she understood. And what really happened in life, it really, you, the people, you call it the people, you want to check the law, you bend the rule this way. And here is the manager...
I'll pass it for you.
It's a [unintelligible].
Thank you.
They say I was a, the council, it was a, I don't understand what I'm talking about. You, the council, you don't understand what I'm talking about. That means that I am stupid, and I want to pay the taxes. When the Mr. Counsel, Riccio, said last time, they give me two lots, I naïve, known the people and their parents and everything else, I understood that someday, somebody will understand. I know you understand all right. And when I was approached by, at that time, Chairman DePaul, Emile Dell, I explained, I send fourteen copies, and I really thought you were fixed. That's what her mother said, Margaret, rest in peace. It was very fixed. But instead, at the very end, I understood that William, he too, was a black magic, and he was a devil. .....................................................................
Mr. Fischello, you're, Mr. Fischello.
Mr. Fischello, please.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Because you're still, it's only thing-
Mr. Fischello.
You have the Board of Education, the park, the park department-
Mr. Fischello.
Police and no seum.
Out of a courtesy to you, we've, we've heard-
You can't steal the people like this.
Mr. Fischello.
Obligation to say educate the people on the campus on the hall.
Mr. Fischello, I, I don't want to upset you, but we've heard this for-
Another thing, I had my son here that night-
Mr. Fischello.
Because I wanted to see class of children, and I asked them-
I understand.
And they refused, I'm not a lawyer, Severino, Borino. So I had asked my son, because-
Just read this. Mr. Fischello, we really need to move on with our meeting. I've given you your five minutes, your time is up, please. You're out of order, Mr. Fischello.
You have no law. That's all you have.
All right, I'm going to call a two-minute recess, please. We're adjourned for two minutes.
You know, like, like me. That's all they-
We will still open public communication, we're back in open session. Before we do that, I just want to point out to the public, again, we've heard Mr. Fischello's issues going back probably 20 years now. The council always gives him the courtesy of an opportunity to, to speak to us. Aside from that, I'd like to acknowledge and thank our town attorney who took the time to meet with Mr. Fischello and his family to go over this. And I also want to acknowledge Mr. Ricchio, because Mr. Ricchio was trying to help Mr. Fischello at the last meeting, and he certainly did offer to meet with them privately and offered his assistance. And to hear anything other than that tonight, the microphone is not open. To hear anything other than that tonight is insulting. So he was trying to assist last meeting. The microphone is open to the public, if there's any other member that would like to come up and speak, please do so.
Are you going to come on up, Dory?
She's afraid to come up.
Good evening, Dory Conlin Perigini, 174 Summer Street. I did not plan on speaking tonight, so I don't have anything prepared, but since my name was mentioned a few times at the beginning, I figured I'd at least come up and say hello. And I would like to first just thank Chairman Palmeri for, in all of the emails and communications and official statements about the recent incident that went unfortunately viral, nobody really named the problem by name, and that is racism. And up until Chairman Palmeri tonight said that word, you know, I hadn't really heard that coming from any of the leadership in the town. So first, I do want to thank you for that. When we think about racism, there's, there's really two ways to look at it. We can consider ourselves non-racist, and I think, I'm at least hoping that everybody in this room would consider themselves as a non-racist person. When I say non-racist, I mean that we don't participate in racist acts, right? We can also take another stance in being anti-racist, and that is an active stance of actively going out and dismantling white supremacy and other racist acts within our community. So my dream for Sutherland is not only that would be, we would be this non-racist welcoming community, but we would be one that was actively anti-racist. So when I think back to what Councilman Ricchio said, that we are a privileged community,